Yeah. I was asking you, I heard you make a lot of firsts. I had your bill. This was one of my life's priorities. I already asked you, I thought I'd give all my money. I don't know if you ever talked about having, you know, like bricks and stuff. And I can never say totally so.
Oh, no. No.
Yeah. That's great. Oh, yeah. Okay. That's a south project. She looks very, she's in the south. She's in town. Yeah. Yeah. That's why, that's why, so just, that's why.
Uh, I do a job at Moscow. What come on?
You know, I'm just, you know, the flashpad, pop, flashpad name is after a former coworker in the Dead Kennedys. And, and so something to think about as a theme.
Everyone can hear this here.
It's maybe money because it's in the community. I mean, there's ways to think about it. Maybe Julia's plan for the so-and-so Julia, they set us up a sign or a big brick.
And you talked about doing, having, like, a wall where you could see, you know, donated by the, you know, having that.
Bins is, in fact, Potlatch, the Leighton, I mean, I couldn't remember who, Leighton Realtors, paid for events, they paid, they paid twenty-five hundred dollars and did a concrete pad event.
You were like, we kept doing like, our public, it did like, the little, she has a wall, there's a flashpad with paint on it.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, it's the latest kind of paint on this wall.
Yeah. So they have a wall, they built a wall, I don't know if they, we ever talked about having, you know, like bricks and, and those are easy, you know, nice features.
Yeah. And we have a time, yeah, we have a show.
Yeah. Um, we were in Kendrick talking about the DQ and the project. And they did that, they, they found a family restoration foundation that they discovered and they put it back. There is all the money, please fix their, fix their.
So, so you know, so what, why don't we tell them? Oh, that's true. We're, we're done. I look at the, I mean, we're not, we didn't even have from.
And this, this, the way the grant works, there's someone who's forcing, say like, Julietta, in the middle of Sunday. And you, you, and everybody's destination. And having it get a big, in fact, it's a pass.
We need the best.
Yeah. And we talked about the policy of the rest of the city by having it put out.
So, so, you know, once I left, I'm going to, you know.
Sure. It's a lovely part of the field. It's nice.
Yeah, it's a wonderful.
I know how it works.
Pepper. So we do have, um, so Kendrick, so we have, that goes to you. Right? Yeah, you want, you want to.
So they're on the engine of Moscow, um, on that, on that, on that.
It's got a new fancy name.
Engineering analysis. So he's, he's not Ellis Island. These guys last week talked about any soils in that, I don't know, if, if just in, if they, if they.
Well, and then, wouldn't it, wouldn't it would all be concrete?
Yeah, it would drain, it would be. And then, you know, it has this little utility connection. But it looks like those are right there in the system.
We definitely.
That's a huge issue.
And a minute for May twenty-fourth, a special meeting.
I'll second.
I think it was just one motion, one second, two seconds, one motion. Do you have any, uh, minutes? Do everybody have minutes? Are the bills, the bills rather?
What was the big one for KME? I mean, I know it's water stuff, but, or something.
Oh, what's the one for?
The KME, the big thing down at the water treatment plant, it's the computer PLC.
Oh, PLC, yeah, the controller.
The thing that Josh talked about at the last meeting.
I move to approve the payables for the month of May.
I'll second.
Do you have a favor? Yes. Are you having, uh, the minute, do everybody have a minute? Are the bills, the bills rather?
What was the big one for KME? I mean, I know it's water stuff, but, or something.
Oh, what's the one for?
The KME, the big thing down at the water treatment plant, it's the computer PLC.
Oh, PLC, yeah, the controller.
The thing that Josh talked about at the last meeting.
I move to approve the payables for the month of May.
I'll second.
Do you have a favor? I mean, I have it.
She's fine.
Right there.
I'm here on your guys' request. My ears are plugged after driving down here.
It's about the consideration for, to adopt mandatory garbage ordinance and then the information of burning.
Yeah, my ears are really plugged right now.
Do you want a drink?
I just had a berry, sorry. I'm Amanda Bashaw with Leighton County Solid Waste Office. I manage all of our collection contracts and our disposal contracts for all rural Leighton County residents and all the rural cities. On behalf of all the programs, whether it's your recycling, your garbage collection service, the bulky waste programs, you know, the programs we implement for electronic waste, your cleanup days, your tire amnesty days, shred days, different things like that, take care of a lot of the service issues, all the cart changes, you know, I work with Wendy, all the city clerks daily, on our contracts and so forth and so on. There are many rules, there are few rule cities in our county that don't have solid waste fees as a mandatory service within their incorporated city. And that is up to each independent city government board to enforce that or not enforce that. Throughout rural Leighton County, the city of Moscow, and some of the cities, it is a mandatory fee. The reason it's a mandatory fee is because all homes are generating waste. Some may generate less than others or more than others, but as I said, that weekly driveway service prevents stucco services from people dumping in dumpsters that don't belong to them. It prevents illegal burning, illegal dumping, which I've been with the county for twenty-seven years, I can't even count how many illegal dumps in burn pilows and violations I've dealt with. We're really hard to enforce those things to keep the county clean, and that way everybody's paying their fair share. I mean, some residents can have a small thirty-five cart, they might not use it every week because they recycle everything, or they have a compost, or they yard waste, I mean, and we're always thankful for those who are conservative and, you know, think about keeping their waste out of the landfills and so forth and so on. But I know down here in Julietta, it's not a mandatory fee. You guys have active accounts, I'm going to say at least fifteen accounts, that use the bulky waste sites, recycling programs, the Moscow Recycling Center, and other services that are free to them indirectly, but that mandatory solid waste fee that your other residents are paying for is what pays for those programs. And that's why I encourage all residents to have to pay for solid waste fees. You know, even for short times when homes are vacant, that's when a lot of times everybody's generating their own waste, because they're doing a remodel, they're demolishing, they're cleaning up after, you know, something happened within their family, and they're taking things to the bulky waste sites. We all have tires to get rid of, we all have appliances to get rid of, everybody has yard waste to get rid of at different times. A lot of people hopefully are toothing the recycle cardboard. You know, they might not recycle all their plastics, or their glass, or different things, but that mandatory fee pays for all those services and programs. It pays for the trucks to be out there, it helps keep the cost and the programs fair and equal across the board to everybody. I mean, you know, residents pick a thirty-five or they pick a ninety-five, and it's a matter of what their household needs are. But I, I've shared with Wendy, we've had many conversations over the years, and I've spoke with Dick and the board before, and the council before, you know, I've always sent the county solid waste ordinance to you. I mean, you can adopt it to what fits your city and your needs if you choose to do one, but I do strongly encourage, I mean, do you have residents that have to pay mandatory water and sewer fees? You know, I mean, garbage is the same type of service, because you don't want residents doing things illegal that are going to cost you more, put something in jeopardy, whether it's your neighbor's home or your forest lands that get burnt up because they're burning their garbage, or they're illegally dumping it on the American Ridge Road. I've cleaned up a lot of dumps up there, you know. So I just want to encourage that and bring it to your attention. I mean, the way the county ordinance is, if the home is occupied, the fee's mandatory. If it's a primary residence, it's mandatory. I mean, it has to be without service or utilities for three months before the county will stop the service, because a lot of times during that three-month period, somebody is looking for a new tenant, or they're doing repairs. If you have rental properties that you know or you own, you know that. I mean, you have to repair, you have to clean up after your tenants. Some are better than others, but you know, that can't be predicted. So, anyway, that was one thing I was asked to touch on. I don't know if you guys have any questions on that or thoughts that you want to discuss? I mean, like I said, I, I know you've got about fifteen accounts that are using the bulky waste program and different things, and they have a homeowner exemption on their property, and it's their mandatory home, and they're not paying solid waste fees. So, that's for you to consider, but I was asked to kind of touch base on that and explain to you where the county comes from that. So like I said, any questions, if you want to further discuss it, I'm happy to be in touch with you or help look at an ordinance with you, or help Wendy with one, or whatever you guys choose to do if you choose to. I did bring a copy of mine down to leave with Wendy again.
I guess I'm a little different. Uh, we could use a little gravel down at the dumpsters.
At the bulky waste site?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we could use a little gravel down there.
Okay.
It's kind of.
I can have to update that. I usually just call Taylor and he does it. Yeah, that's, that's an easy fix. That's an easy fix. I'm glad you said something, as you know, Dick.
So Wendy, I'm sorry, Amanda.
Go ahead.
Uh, so would we approve to move forward with an ordinance, and then you, we write the ordinance or take the one that the county has?
Yeah, that would be a different one.
Okay, so that's what we're trying to, is move forward with an ordinance?
Any questions?
If I wish. So does anyone, does anybody have any thoughts on that before we move on to the burning?
I think we should.
Okay, well, I move to move forward to adopt a mandatory garbage ordinance.
I'll second.
I'll just make a suggestion that, you know, sometimes when you're looking at those ordinance, you can make like a utility ordinance that would include your water and your sewer and your garbage fees, in case you need to make changes to that, and you can just have sections within that ordinance that covers all of them, and have it all be combined as one, some cities will do that, that's just a suggestion.
That's the kind of way it is.
Is it?
It just comes out.
Uh-huh.
On your water bill, it's all on there.
Right, all your utilities are on one bill to your city residents, that's what I'm saying, you can kind of have an ordinance that covers all those, and they can all be kind of consistent, that water, sewer, and sanitation fees are mandatory for all occupied homes, you know, and we have this fee if you have to do a new hookup or whatever it might be, because I know some cities have hookup fees and shut-off fees and vacation fees and, so. Um, the other thing I was asked to talk a little bit about was burning, because I know that back in April, there was a little bit of concern with yard waste at the bulky waste site, and I didn't learn about it until April, the last weekend that we had to dig up. So I am working to make sure you guys have a yard waste box in April and October at your bulky waste site because of the high need and the high demand that came through in April, and that was the first time that it was, has ever been a problem since two thousand and fourteen, you know. So, I am working to make sure I have that only October, Nick and I talked about it, to make sure you guys have a separate box for yard waste to rid of that problem, because it's my understanding that some residents were told they could drop yard waste off at another location on a piece of property that the city owns, which I understand that, because you didn't want to, you know, just dump it anywhere. But a lot of times, there are cities within our county and cities in adjacent counties to us that allow their residents just to make a pile of yard waste and then go burn it, you know, in the fall time and start their own big burn pile. Well, what tends to happen, first of all, that's against the EQ rules, because that causes so much air pollution, because it's one huge pile going up at once, versus if everybody has their small pile of yard waste that they burn in their own backyard or their own compost, that's a small amount of volume of smoke and air pollution, so it doesn't set up all the meters that the EQ is monitoring on air pollution. So, that's one reason why you don't want to have a big pile that the city allows all residents to use. And the other number one problem with those is a huge problem up in Elk River, where everybody started dumping their tires in there, their couches, their mattresses, their garden hoses. I mean, you can't burn that waste, none of that can be burned. The only thing that legally can be burned is your natural yard waste. And the only yard waste that you should be burning is the yard waste that's on your property, that is from your own tree trimmings, not, you know, a whole block of Main Street. So, it is, and you know, there's no burning may-ten through October twentieth unless you have a burn permit from Idaho Department of Land or DEQ, which are free, anybody can apply for one online, they're easy to get, you know, but other times of the year, the only thing you can burn is yard waste. You can't be burning other garbage, which is another reason why it's important to oppose mandatory solid waste fees on occupied dwellers.
Where the city dumps the brush, if anything is put in there that doesn't belong in there, I take it out.
I, I know you, Dick. You, you do a great job trying to monitor all the programs that we have down here, making sure things are not in a pile or in the recycling boxes as they shouldn't be. I mean, I, I've always appreciated you for your extra efforts in that by all means, but, I mean, it's very easy that things get, happen, because you monitor it, but it doesn't mean somebody didn't put a couch or a tire or a garden hose in there. I mean, you know, things incidentally happen to all of us by all means. We're driving down the road and something was out of our pickup that we didn't mean for it to, I mean, that happens. But sometimes when you start one pile, then it's just an invitation for everybody, you know. You guys have a lot of neighboring counties down here next to Leighton County, between Mester County and Thurlaider County, and, you know, we've had some issues in the past with different neighboring counties coming over to Leighton County and bringing their problems to us that we have to pay to clean up, so. That's one thing with the burn piles, I mean, and you want to make sure that you're just legally burning what you can burn. The EQ has a great website, there's lots of brochures and pamphlets, I wish I would have grabbed some or had some to hand out to you guys, I mean, I don't know if it's a concern with the citizens.
You said that you needed a burn permit from the DEQ?
Or Idaho Department of Land.
In addition to the fire department one that we need?
IDL has no say within corporate city limits.
Yeah.
No.
We, we issue burn permits for inside the city limits, our department does.
Yeah, so you did both of them or just one?
No.
No, just, just yours?
IDL, yeah, IDL even will tell you, you read IDL specs, it's outside of corporate city limits is how it says.
Well, I mean, the county ordinance states that there is no burning, and all the DEQ and Idaho Department of Land, there is no burning at all October ten, or May tenth for October.
But IDL does not dictate within any corporate city limits.
Okay, I mean, I'm not going to argue that, I mean, by no means, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I understand.
Um, you know, I, I'm more focused on the county, so I don't know how all the laws work between the state and the rural, and the incorporated cities, but I know many other cities will kind of follow that same guidance just to keep themselves protected. It's not so much that it's a required, but it can still be an advisory or a guidance for everybody's safety, that maybe not a requirement for the burn permits.
Mike keeps a pretty good eye on it, so.
Well, good, I'm glad you do, Mike. I appreciate that, we all do, because it only takes one small fire to get out of control and can be a huge problem for everybody, so.
Let it, let it rain.
Right, I agree, I agree. I'm not complaining about the rain. So, I don't know if that's helpful for you all, I don't know if you have more questions or any specific concerns on burning?
I just want to say thank you for, for working with Nick and providing those bins, because I still think that's still the best solution, is for people to take.
Right, right. And, you know, please, I mean, it's super important that residents know that up at the transfer station, which is, you know, privately owned by Inland Northways, previously known as Leighton Sanitation, they are a private franchise, but they take yard waste free of charge from anybody all the time. So I know the city of Julietta doesn't have a yard waste box for their city residents because they feel like it's accepted at the bulky waste site, it's another cost that gets passed on to all their residents, and you can also haul it to the transfer station anytime they're open, you know.
So we're not supposed to use the one in Kendrick?
Yeah, I, no, you're not supposed to use the one in Kendrick, because even like the county residents aren't supposed to use the one inside city of Kendrick, because that is not a program that's within our existing contracts right now. Um, so the city of Kendrick pays for that, because in my eyes, the county provides and the cities provide that compost and that yard waste disposal at the bulky waste programs or at the transfer station. So that's one reason why, I mean, Leighton County doesn't have that in our contractual programs, like all the other programs where there's a box just in the city of Kendrick for them to drop off yard waste in, or Julietta anytime they want to.
Is it a costly fee to have?
Yeah, there's the hauling cost and the man-hours cost by all means, there's no disposal cost.
The hundred pieces of it for time or what?
Per trip.
For hauling.
For them to haul it. So there's not a disposal cost. But then the problem is, is those boxes aren't manned, like at the bulky waste site, how they're locked up and they're manned. Those, those boxes are left out, open for everybody, and it's been a problem in the past, then you end up with garbage in them, so then it's not just a hundred and fifty-dollar trip, because then you've got disposal cost, and you've got additional man-hours, because they dumped it out to put it in yard waste and compost it, and then they have to pick it all back up and it has to go to landfill because it's contaminated. So, it can potentially have more cost, you know.
I have another little thing. The last winter, whoever had headed the garbage, truck drivers, surely.
Probably the franchise.
When they come into the park and pick up the.
Dumpster.
Dumpster there and empty it.
Uh-huh.
I mean, I kept the road plowed out all the way around. Usually they just come in, back in, pick it up and back out. Last winter, and I had big rocks sitting at the corners of these at the playground, and what did they do? Run over all of it? They broke four pipes and four corners. You tell them to go around that, don't run over that.
Yeah, I, I'll pass that along.
Next time.
But in the future, I mean, I work for our residents, your residents, for the whole county, whether your city or county, and when there is damage like that that is done, I will hold them accountable and they will pay for those repairs, whether it's gate, they tear up somebody's driveway because their trucks get stuck in the winter, inexperienced drivers, I mean, we can hold them accountable for those damages if they happen, it's just a matter of, you know, having some photos and respectfully working through it to get the matter resolved.
Yeah, I don't have any to show you.
No, you don't now, but I want you to know that for future, Dick, is what I'm saying.
I'm not, I mean.
You're the type of problem, you see a, you're the type of person who sees a problem, you fix it, you don't worry about it, it's, and I get that. But I just want you to know that there are other people that can be held accountable for those damages, is what I'm trying to say, for your own future, but, yeah, and, you know, maybe what we should do is make sure we take a picture of it now, before winter, and kind of, you can help line it out, or I can, you know, visit the site with you.
You have to replace all of that.
What were the pipes for?
They were for tangies.
They went around the playground.
Oh, I, the ground perimeter, the ground perimeter, gotcha.
They had sewer pipes that let, let around.
Gotcha, yeah.
And then it protects the kids.
I was afraid it was a, some other kind of pipe.
Oh, yeah, no, it's just, it's a playground.
It's just a perimeter pipe for the playground, gotcha, for the park.
And we had big rocks painted bright yellow at each corner, and still they ran over and broke, broke about that much off each pipe, so.
And as Wendy knows, I mean, and I don't know who else in this room with us, but there were a lot of service issues in the last year within the yard waste in some of the areas down here with a lot of accounts getting missed, new drivers, I mean, every entity has had trouble with turnovers and keeping employees and retaining staff, and, I mean, we all have been dealing with this for a couple of years now, and it is difficult, and it's more difficult when it comes to sanitation services or water sewer, because that's a service we can't go without, and we've got to have. And no matter who's sick, you know, they're going to find someone to try and put him out there and put him on the route, whether they got fully trained or they didn't, they just can't shut their doors and say, we're short-staffed. I mean, you know, so I do give them that, that they do get their people out there and they still try to get the job done. Granted, there has been some disappointment and frustration there, but, and when that comes about, I'm happy to help if I know about it, but if I don't know about it, I can't help any of you, and that's why I'm always grateful with our communication with the cities and, you know, Dick's brought these things to my attention, and I'll work with them all and make sure we get it, just like Nick told me about the yard waste being a problem. Okay, that's on the radar, we can get that fixed too, you know. And sometimes it's hard at the bulky waste sites because there's only so many boxes.
Yeah.
You know, inventory's been hard, we've been, Inland Northways has been short on dumpsters, they've been short on everything, it's been a big problem lately. People can't get inventory, I mean, you order a computer, you gotta wait six months for it, you know? It's crazy, so, I just, we all have to kind of be humble and be patient with everything in life by all means, but, yeah, as soon as I'm aware, but I'm happy to help any of you. That goes for you guys too, so.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you guys, very much.
I'm recording, I'm trying to vote on the progressing with ordinance. We have that motion in a second, but we can.
Chris Baker with SIDA. I was here at the last council meeting to talk about the Julietta splashpad, the proposed splashpad, and council asked that there would be more support and more information and support of the proposed splashpad. So we have Lisa and Casey here who have been working on that information.
Yes. So, from what I understood, I wasn't able to come to the last meeting, but I've been working with you guys on this for a little bit now, and from what I kind of understood is that you guys have a ton of more information before we kind of commit to anything and make sure that this, the rest of the town's on, on board as well. So, we did do a quick little like online petition thing, and I, petition is like the wrong word to use, but it's the online platform that we have. So we did that, and we just posted one time, pushed it out there, and we got eighty-six people signed, who signed it, and that was just from the one post, so I know we would have a lot more support if we pushed it more too, I just kind of wanted to see what everyone's thoughts were on it. So everything was very positive, you know, everybody was definitely very supportive of it. A couple of the questions that came up was, would the city have enough water? Because we all know that, you know, sometimes water gets tight in, in summertime. So we did do some research on that, and there is different kinds of ones, so the, the one that, you know, we feel like would be the best would be the recirculating one, where we fill up the tank and then it would recirculate once it drains, and then it would get treated and then just recirculate, so that would, you know, that kind of handles the water problem. And then, some other ones was, they didn't want it to fight against the pool, which, you know, it really doesn't, I mean, the more things we have in our community, the better, and this is Julietta versus Kendrick, I mean, you know, Kendrick still comes over and we still go over there, but in two different cities, that's what the grant would be for the city of Julietta, so it wouldn't fight with the money for the pool. I think those were kind of the biggest questions that people had, that the community had. And then we did, Bonnie looked into talking to Orfino in Potlatch, and the way that Orfino did it was that they budgeted sixty thousand for a splashpad design and install, thirty-five thousand of that came from the Door Shack Recreation Group, the total cost of the splashpad was forty-three thousand and some change, and Public Works helped install and pour the concrete with vendors, which helped keep the cost down. Monthly costs are absorbed through the recreation budget, so Door Shack kind of takes a lot of theirs. And then Potlatch is open six hours a day, two-hour shifts, they use roughly sixty thousand gallons of water a day, which that would be for ours, because I don't believe theirs is the recirculating, right?
Theirs is not.
Theirs is not.
So wait a minute, you just said they're open six hours a day, two shifts, so. Three hours a day. So they have theirs fenced off? No, so you like the way that one works and the way the one in Orfino works is you only have it on during certain hours. So the city is control of when it is turned on. When they can push it. So like, I think Orfino shuts theirs down by eight o'clock in the night. So, you will be in control when the hours would be.
And it seems like Potlatch was almost to kind of control some of their water usage. They would recommend putting in a recirculating system to help save water, it would add the extra cost of maintenance and chemicals though.
No, so you like the way that one works and the way they want to Orfino works is you only have it on during certain hours. So the city is control of when it is turned on.
When they can push it.
So like I think Orfino shuts theirs down by eight o'clock in the night. So you will be in control of when the hours would be.
And it seems like Potlatch's was almost to kind of control some of their water usage. They would recommend putting in a recirculating system to help save water. It would add the extra cost of maintenance and chemicals though. But it was about that water usage. They said their maintenance is low and the company they used is called Brain Deck. So I know, so we've been working really closely with SEDA. They said they could definitely help us write a grant if it's something that we want to go forward with. And then we talked about different fundraising ideas. We talked about doing different sponsorship levels. As far as like, you know, we all know, everybody likes to put their name on things.
Like a tier donation.
Like a tier donation where they put their names on benches, bricks, that kind of stuff to help fundraise. You know, little things like that. And then SEDA would help write the grant for the rest of it. So, I don't know. Is there any other question? Like what kind of?
So at the last meeting, we were talking about a compaction test. Is that something that you guys talked about in your meeting? Because we wanted to make sure that, because the park gets very wet at certain times of the year. And we wanted to make sure that it could handle the concrete without breaking and all of that.
Yeah, and that's something Keller Associates, that's a company that you're already working with. They would be able to come out here and do a soil test to just test it to make, to see if it's, you know, feasible. And that's definitely something that you want to do first thing.
Meaning I talked to Stillman and see if he was willing to do that for the city since you know how to work with guys.
Yeah. And I saw you were down there. Did you guys come up with a possible location of where you're thinking of putting it at the park?
Right there where the old volleyball nets used to be. So it'd be between the park and then the river there.
And what's like, how big?
Just the size that it would allow. I mean, you know, definitely not going into the parking or going into, I mean, in my mind, it would just stay right in that grassy area. And I know there was some concern about moving Blackberry Festival vendors.
Right.
Which I'm off, right, because I mean, that is where, you know, they sit up. But and we have all that room, you know, behind, between the parks and then that would get more people going over that way too. Excuse me, between the gazebo and the baseball fields where the car lot is, you know, that gets people moving that way.
There's no trees and there's no grass and they don't like it.
Because it brings more people to the Blackberry Festival. You have a lot to go, you know, and families are going to go.
Right. It definitely brings, I mean, you know, yeah, I mean, having that there would make the park a destination, being on the bike path. I mean, it would bring the possibility of, you know, people renting out the gazebo more. You know, I don't know if that's even an option now or if they can reserve the gazebo or anything like that. But, you know, if the splash pad's there, you know, people are going to really want the spot more and they might be more willing to come and, you know, reserve the gazebo for a certain thing and pay a little bit more to do that. So it's a possibility of bringing that in, so.
That's a cool question.
Yeah.
Did you do a petition or a survey?
There was more of us support form.
It was just a support form. It was on, it was on like a petition, like my, oh, change.org was where it was on. But it was just that online platform. So someone asked that, well, what are we fighting against? It's like, we're not fighting against anyone.
We're fighting for.
We're just, that was the best way to get an online support platform.
So as part of that petition or change, are you petitioning for public funding?
No.
Okay.
No, not at all. No, we think with the SEDA grant and with minimal fundraising, I think we'll be able to.
We are on a few council meetings already. We have one in August we're to attend and they've already said their support from this too.
And how much do you think you'll have to fundraise for?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
It was through one of the school. Dory Nelson's on the board. I can't remember what it's called now. It was the new one that started, but she said to come out in August.
Yeah, and I know the J K Rec said that they have some funds too, that we could go to their meeting and get some funds that way as well. We also have a couple local businesses that have supported and said they would like to donate.
How much do you think you'll have to fundraise?
Well, I think we, let's see, how much would?
The grant will fund up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I doubt you're going to get anywhere near that.
No. Do you don't have much? And I don't have a price on here on how much policies cost.
Smaller than Orfino, so I would say it's going to be between thirty and forty.
Yeah.
Would be what I would say to hold up.
So when did Orfino have theirs put in?
Theirs was a while ago. I would say they were probably eight years ago.
And how much was there when they put it in?
Forty-three. Forty-three. So I think ours is going to be roughly, and I think, how much was the Potlatch, like one twenty?
Well, there's a block grant for Potlatch of eighty thousand, which was a little bit light. And again, the recirculation, the engineering, a lot of work was done by the city and there's in kind. I would, I would suggest this is going to be more than the Orfino project to do.
Yeah, I was going to say less than like seventy-five.
I would look at a hundred to a hundred and fifty, just at the grant. And there's no magic formula between the match and the grant. There's a lot of factors. The fact you have a committee here working is supportive. The fact that you qualify for the grant. Tony Tenny with Commerce Department came with Krista and he looked at it. I think this is what was Tony's comments as far as.
Yeah, he already looked at it. He said it was a really nice spot for it. We were looking more at the restrooms, but yeah, it was.
These block grants, as I mentioned, for the block grant, about under a hundred thousand, they're really not worth the effort. But they're easier to get, to get over a hundred and then get all the features you want and make sure you're not cutting, cutting corners. But I think between their fundraising, their city resources, to some degree to do site prep, are there different ways to put things together, make it, make it work?
Is part of the funding for the maintenance also that you're trying to get or is that something that's expected the city to handle?
In the last meeting, I think that it was that the city would, the city workers would handle the maintenance on it as well. So once it's put on, so yeah, we weren't fundraising for that. We could definitely put that into fundraising if needed, but.
Do you have kind of an idea of what the maintenance would require?
No.
Did you, I have a question. Did you happen to poll Orfino or Potlatch what their yearly maintenance costs were?
We did it. So Bonnie was the one, so they don't, like, I called them and they weren't as like open with city details. So when Bonnie called them, she was able to get more information, but she did put down here what, what they cost or anything like that. Just that Potlatch recommended the recirculating was all that it was.
I'm, from a medical standpoint, who would be liable for injuries?
There would be, if there would be a sign up saying at your own risk, so it would be the parents. So, because it would be an at your own risk play area, so.
Do those hold up their court?
No, they don't.
Yeah.
Just like, no, they don't. I was just curious. That was a good question.
So the city would pay for the chemicals and whatever, like a broken sprinkler or what?
It would be, yeah. Once, I mean, once, once the splash pad is in, it would be more, I mean, it's on, you know, it'd be more support for the city to take care of it and do all the maintenance and stuff. It would be a city, you know, similar to like a park or something like that. It'd be a city ram park, city ram splash pad.
Is there a way to like have a committee that kind of helps raise money for the maintenance of it?
If I could set that up. It's no different with any committee.
I mean, what does Potlatch, do Potlatch, the city just took it over? The city?
I'm pretty sure, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think the city has to want it. I mean, you know, I mean, I could be up here all day fighting for this, but I mean, the city has to want it too. The city has to want to bring it in and want to take over the maintenance and the cost for it. I mean, it comes down to that. I mean, because, I mean, we can fundraise and get the grant and everything like that, but if we don't have, you know, I mean, it would be the city that would take it over, so.
It's kind of hard to wrap our minds around when we don't even have an idea of what that would cost.
Right.
Why did you choose the location that you chose?
And that was just what, you know.
The nice place for us feels all year round, not just the little kids get wet and when they get wet, it's nice to have that in the sunshine weather because I also have. So I think you would put it out someplace rather than.
And we, I mean, that spot is definitely not set in stone at all. So, I mean.
But I mean, that's just, you know, remember when my kids were little, they were wet.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's definitely.
It's nice when you're playing in the water.
I have a question. Would the maintenance cost include the increased cost of, or of the restrooms and the other areas in the park during that period of time?
Yeah, it would definitely, I mean, the park would get used more, which, I mean, isn't a bad thing.
So that would be an increased cost for?
Possibly, yeah, to the city. Yeah.
I will say that we're already ordering bulk chlorine and a little chlorine goes a long way. So if it's recirculating, that the chemical cost is going to be low, but the electrical cost of running the pump may be.
More.
Might be running the air conditioner or something. I don't know. That might be the, the higher cost might be the pump and not the chemicals, is what I think.
I'm more concerned about most supervision. Yeah. What's the first thing you learn when you go to the pool? Don't run on the concrete.
Well, our plan is not to have a concrete one. We have looked into doing an actual like splash area where it's actually like a foamy stuff that you sit on. So, because multiple ones, I've been to, the, the concrete is unsafe in my opinion. And so I said, if we're going to do this, then we need to spend the extra to get the foamy parts.
Well, and I mean.
And then for a donation part, people can put their names on those pads and they are part of the high donations.
And I mean, the alternative right now for the Juliana kids that can't get, you know, can't ride the bikes or can't get to Kendrick is to go down and scale the, the side of a creek and jump in and the pool and, you know.
The alien snakes and the river and.
How gross the river gets, you know, all the algae and stuff at the end of the year and all of that. You know, I mean, I know, we have the cliff, I mean. These are practical examples.
No, you're kidding. I mean, I know what it's like that I did it, but. Because Karen, I don't want my.
Karen, we grant that water all the time.
And the water's not great. We didn't say that. I mean, and you know, and like I said, I, you know, I think that we would, you know, be able to fundraise and bring everything in and, and all of that. But yeah, I mean, it would come down to the city ultimately taking over after the splash pad is installed.
I have one more question. I'm not really familiar with splash pads, so I don't know how they work. I know with swimming pools, if there's light parts, that type of thing. Are you expecting that there would be someone to supervise for splash?
Yeah, there would be a sign that says, you know, enter at your own risk. And then the, the children themselves hit the button to make the, the fountains go. And then there's no, I mean, there's, you know, a little bit of standing water at the bottom that's just waiting for it to drain down. It's more like a sprinkler. It's like a commercial sprinkler.
So the kids would come without parents or with parents?
Well, I think that's up to each individual parent, if they are okay with their children going or not.
Send them to the pool though.
Yeah. So I think that's just up to each individual family.
How long did those pads last that you were talking about?
We haven't, I mean, we haven't done a ton of looking into the actual fixtures or pads or anything like that until, you know, we, we kind of wanted to see if this was something even that was going to happen. And, you know, we kind of need to, you know, get the approval before we kind of bring in Keller to do.
That rain deck company that Potlatch uses, I know they have a, a system in place where you buy the fixtures and then you can return them for credit for new ones, right? So, so as they wear out, you can give them back.
Is that like yearly, five years or what?
If I recall correctly, I believe it was like ten years. So I could be wrong. It's been a while since I've done this, but it was definitely not.
So once it's put in though, the city would eventually have costs to keep it on, or not just?
Well, depending on which program it goes through. If you do rain deck, you can turn them for credit eventually.
You get credit, but you'd still wouldn't be full credit. You'd have to be, you know, like you turn in an old lawnmower or a car and get a new one.
But there could be potential for more grants.
Yeah, and also neither the idea of the gazebo, if you're charging for the gazebo, that money could go into the funders.
We have expenses of the park that goes to, doesn't it? We rent that gazebo.
We don't charge.
We don't charge.
But that's an option that you could start doing is charging.
Oh, yes.
Oh, no.
So they can grab the term, they do charge in Kendrick.
Does that?
Well, that's Kendrick.
Does the, would the grant include the engineering costs to determine whether that's an applicable site?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think, I mean, the grant and our fundraising would, I mean, the whole site preparation. So, I mean, bringing the engineer in, bringing in.
Whether it's.
Yeah.
Well, the future, that'll pay for the engineering. This is like, this is like doing your water wastewater project, the planning process. But it's the, the amount of engineering pre-analysis work, like the soils, would be probably pretty minimal, I think. But, but that's why we want to talk to Stillman. It's okay with you to see if he'd be willing to look into that and we make that determination. But then the grant itself would pay for, if there's any, like connecting the water, the recirculation system, all the equipment, all the, you know, fixed capital parts.
So when are you planning on, I mean, are you planning on having that ready for next?
Well, I think, I mean, at this point, I think we have to get some kind of.
Yeah, so the, the grant needs to be submitted to Commerce before September eighteenth. So we do need to get, I mean, if there is going to be a council approval, we do need to get that commitment today. So, so we can start this process, right?
We can't do that.
I wasn't aware you needed an answer today.
Takes time and, and energy for people to, to get all there. And, and someone been asking about how many people, there, there's a, a group of, of kids and grownups that come to the park every Thursday and they get there about ten o'clock in the morning. They ride their bicycles and whatever. That's the time where they go. And they come back to the park, they have their lunch and play on the playground equipment. Yes, every Thursday, and twenty-some of these, these people, grownups and kids, every Thursday come there. And that would be a great thing for to hire these kids to give them time.
That's really fun.
Orfino one is one.
I clean the bathrooms.
Well, and I think it can be as big or as small as, I mean, the city wants. I mean, it can be huge, you know, with ten different fountains or, I mean, Lakewood's got one and then there was one fountain. I mean, I think it's just, you know, as big or as small as the city wants to, you know, so.
So if the council wants a little more time to make the decision, we can come back for the July meeting.
Well, and it's, it's on our agenda. It says, provide council with an update on the proposed splash pad so we don't have an action item. So we can't vote on it anyway, like Wendy was saying. So you'll have to
Come to the July one.
Come to the July one, maybe gather a little more information as far as like an idea of cost. You know, maybe reach out to Stillman about, you know, what he's going to, if he'd be willing to even check into the soil for us and stuff like that, I guess. Just so we have more information and then we can put it as an action item.
Thank you.
I can tell you exactly what, what type of soil we have.
All right. Hello, Laurel Holland, Juliana Baseball Association. I came to you or requested time on your schedule today regarding one action item. And then I actually have a couple of follow-up items to regarding our earlier spring conversation about just what we were going to do this summer. So first, the action item is, I wanted to ask for the city's partnership, really with a grant, actually, that I found out of Lewiston. It's the Lewis Clark Valley Healthcare Foundation's annual large impact grant. And they annually give out anywhere from twenty-five thousand to a hundred thousand dollars for very specific projects for certain populations. And the reason why I would need city help with that is because we're not organized as a 501(c)(3), which is a requirement. You either have to be that or a government entity to be able to do it. And seeing as how you guys own the property, the proposal would be that we would move forward with requesting funds for the lighting project that we've been working on. So we have an updated bid and I believe I attached it and it all got emailed to you, but if not, I will follow up on that. It was at thirty-two thousand dollars and that would enable us to play later times. I think this year we had several short game cancellations mid game for junior varsity due to lighting. So the poor kids didn't even get to play a full game several times this year. Aside from that, we could possibly host at mutual benefit, you know, other tournaments that might run later. We do have lights on one field, but not on the big one. So this would be, you know, to add value really to the time that the high school is able to play and any other entity that would want to. But also, what we could couple in. Um, but also, what we could couple in with that is maybe some parking projects. So I'm thinking if you had a proposal or some type of bid for, um, paint, maybe painting lines in the parking lots or putting in more formal posts regarding where you don't want people to park during baseball games or improving upon the gates or whatever else that we had issues there with. Um, I think for the first game where we followed through on the city's request to close those gates, there were about 60 plus cars parked. All of the gates were actually blocked and there was a uproar on Facebook. So, you know.
Change is hard.
I talked, I, I talked to the coaches and the coaches agreed that, that gate would be closed. And that's the best thing to have, they have two parking lots that they can park in.
Yep. So we would close them and they get opened because there is no locking mechanism there.
Well, I will see that.
And they also don't close all the way. So that was another thing. You also have people complaining about handicap access. So if you do close that, that might be something you wanna consider about where you do provide that particular parking situation.
There's a handicap spot right beside the gate.
They don't close, I mean, there is a gap there. So they're like, you're a handicap, you need a wheelchair or what? There's plenty of room for them to wheel through it.
So there's one handicap space and it's-
There's two.
There's, okay, so there's two there. But for the most part, people were really good this year about not going back there. I mean, I was down there for every game.
Yeah.
So it was really good this year.
It was not without effort, let me tell you, through the baseball association. So discussing parents, having parent agreements, coach agreements, just general changing of the culture. It's been a little difficult. Um, but even with our umpire parking and then buses, we still had buses come through there. Um, and I think updated signage or, you know, painting lines on a parking lot would obviously be really helpful. But it also helps you too in planning for future enhancements. For instance, if we do do the splash pad, that parking, um, and better guided access would be helpful. So I say this because if you do have a bid or some type of proposal, um, that can be put together, I can attach it and include it in this, um, funding request from the Healthcare Foundation. So we do need every criteria in every way for this and I'm willing to do it all, but I do need a partner to do that with. Um, for instance, I'll need some tax information, you know, that goes through on the, on the application. Or if somebody from the city would like to do that, I'm happy to turn over what I have. Um, but I definitely wanna get going on it and turn it in. It is due at the end of July, so we don't have forever. It would fund in November and they would fund all of a project or pieces of a project. We'd have to be very clear about what cost would be, um, and what it would fund.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Has the baseball association pursued going after a 501(c)(3) exemption?
It's quite lengthy.
We would like to, but we don't feel that we have the generated revenue just from our participation of 104 children every year to be able to do that. Because then we'd also have to file taxes.
No, you don't, no.
No, no, no. JCIA, JCIA is a 501(c)(3) and you don't have to generate any, actually, if you make less than $50,000, you're in like Flynn. But it is a lengthy process.
So we would not be able to do it in time-
No.
-for this application process.
So is this like a grant where the city would have to provide a match or is this just regular?
This is money just coming in free money. I look hard for this free money.
And so you, you mentioned the tax information is asked from the city or?
Yes, so we would need a city tax ID. And I believe that's the only tax-related private information, which is part of public information. But that's really the only part of that that we need. I'd need a contact, of course, mailing address. It's pretty straightforward and local people decide on where the, the money goes. Um, back before Saint Joseph, um, became a for-profit entity, they split off part of the Crandallay funding and became the Lewis Clark Valley Healthcare Foundation and that's where this money is coming from. So they have continual resource. People still donate through their businesses and whatnot and they continue to offer this program every year.
So it's just a once a year, you do this?
Yep, once a year.
And so you'd be able to, I know you talked about other games, but would you be seeking out state tournaments and stuff like that though?
Yes, yeah. And so in my mind, there's a lot that we could do in the future. We can expand on the bathrooms. So if you had a bathroom project, you know, we could do, write that in if you had a bid, um, so we can work on that. We could also bring in a better concessions. Right now, a member of our board has provided their own concessions trailer, so that we can do that. Um, but that is something else that we could do. But you would be planning on bringing in other funding, meaning offering, um, other opportunities for playing baseball and softball tournaments to generate revenue. So the action item is participating. Um, and then the follow-up part of that was the parking. And then the other was about dugout upkeep and bathroom maintenance. I think we did pretty good with bathrooms this year. When it comes to the dugouts, um, the dirt, we spoke about the dirt that was getting caked up around the edge. Um, and it's, that has just been a bear to keep up on. Of course, you sweep it, um, but because it's at rain with the dirt and it's gonna still wet, um, there is dirt. Just, I just wanna put it out there before, um, anybody goes out there and think it's gonna be easy and easy clean. Um, other than that, I think we've done pretty well. So if you have any feedback for me on that, that would be great.
Oh, I mean-
How were the bathrooms?
Was there seeds on the floor this year?
Yeah, were there seeds in the urinal and whatnot?
Was there seeds?
Well, you put that one there too.
Oh, yeah, but I didn't-
Did you see the seeds?
I clean it most every damn few days and I never miss.
No one's saying that you don't dig, but they're also asking the boys our, our maintenance.
Do you have, did you see the seeds?
Nobody said that.
Nobody said that. All I'm asking you is have you seen any seeds? I have it.
Very few, very, very small seeds.
Okay, good.
Very few.
I got myself on that. That's great news. Okay, well, keep me posted if you have any other problems when it comes to general hygiene down there. I, you know, we made it a point this year.
The kids, the kids has taken, has done, have done a very good job in keeping the bathrooms. It's some of the outsiders that-
You're right, thank you for recognizing it.
And they, and they've taken very good care of it.
Can you think of, like, if we, we have to decide, like, if we wanted to catch a project, do we have to decide that tonight?
It's July.
No, we have till the end of July, but I need to know if we're gonna think about that. Um, and I will wait, you know, and I would need a person to, like a contact that I will begin communicating with. Be right there, okay.
So I got this last year. All you guys need to do is come up with bids to put on the grant. That's all you need to do, there's, that's, that's it. So go get quotes or look on the internet for stuff to buy. Tell her, put it on the spreadsheets and then bing bang boom. That's all that needs to be done.
Eric's a grant expert.
Yeah.
She can do the work, I bet she can.
I'll make a motion to, um, help Laurel for the application for the L C Valley Healthcare Foundation to charge the background.
Second.
All right, thank you guys, I'll contact you. I appreciate your time.
I may have another question, guys, I'll bring up during my staff.
I think that- don't take the water.
Yeah, I think you got it too.
You could add a couple more, um, handicap spots to maybe help with the people who can't park.
Yeah.
Um, you know, on the bleachers the way they used to.
So the wastewater question, finding grant with the EQ?
Yeah, I would have found some information. Um, so this is, let me get my thoughts together. So we, we've already, Keller has already kinda taken a look, like a, from up high, kind of overview at our, uh, collection system for our current wastewater project. Um, but they feel like it would be a good idea to have a closer, in-depth look, um, to look for more like product, problem spots, not just growth per injection. Um, so this collection study would, um, they would CCTV most of the system, look at, uh, flow monitoring, look for leaks in the pipes and the manholes, do some smoke testing, um, monitoring future flows. So it's, it's a $75,000 project to do this, um, planning study. And so if, if we sign, if you sign this application to the EQ, that would provide half. And then, um, Stillman is hoping that USDA would provide the other half, although that's not certain yet. Um, you can apply for it today, you're not obligated to take it. You know, if the USDA funding doesn't come through and you don't wanna spend your, um, city money on the other half, we can just tell them, no, we're not gonna take it after all and it just goes back and then pop for somebody else. Um, but if we think that we, we might wanna do it, then it needs to be signed this month. Oh, and if, if USDA didn't, um, come through, we could use the other half of our harbor funds that are coming, I think Bonnie said, in July, for, for that other half, just as a, an option.
What are your thoughts, Justin?
So I guess my thoughts are, is this is the, the back half of the wastewater plant project. Um, it's gonna have to be done at some point. Our collection system is also 40 plus years old. Um, I would say that we should go ahead and do it, uh, especially if the money is, it pretty much, I mean, it's not guaranteed, but if, like Wendy says, we can back out if we had to pay for it. But, um, I mean, Juliana was probably going to grow more at some point and the sys, the collection system's gonna have to be extended and et cetera, et cetera. And so all of this will, it will be like the last thing that we have to upgrade. We've already done the water plant, we've done the water distribution system, we've replaced all the mains. We're doing the treatment plant and now this is the last part of the treatment plant is the collection system, so. My, I would say it doesn't hurt to go ahead and apply for it, but, you know, that's my opinion.
Um, I moved that we, um, have the mayor sign the agreement for the wastewater collection funding.
I'll second.
And we are getting a lot of infiltration right now. The river falling in. Yeah, so there's, there is a leak somewhere or several little leaks letting water in, so.
So is the ordinance, like, do we have to do the title only on the ordinance?
No, this is a resolution, yes.
Oh, a resolution.
Just a motion.
I have a question. Word says, whereas Julia municipal code 2.08.010 provides that the mayor shall appoint all employees of the city subject to the approval of city council. That's a current ordinance. We're not adding that, it's already there. Are we following that ordinance right now?
We're definitely following it.
Yes, we're following it.
So you haven't hired anybody without this enough to approval of the council?
No.
Okay.
So our summer hire that started last week was informed? Were you informed about that?
Yes, you were informed about it.
No, we weren't.
No, I never heard it from that.
I told you right here.
Approval is, no.
All right, Dan.
I, I've got, uh, Rosie working with me right now.
Which is not-
If you guys don't like it, then I quit right now. I put the whole words.
Fine, that is not in accordance with the ordinance. Have a nice day.
There you go.
Come here. Do we need a motion to make Nick the mayor or does this work now?
No, no.
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 No. No.
Do we finish the meeting, Wendy?
Yes.
Can a question be asked, is that possible? Or not allowed?
It's not usually allowed.
Is this about a manhole that's allegedly on a manor property?
No, not right now.
Oh, not now?
No, not relevant right now.
Who do I go to?
Just wait till later.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Um, I would like to make a motion to accept the resolution 2022-01 for hiring policy. I second it.
We have a motion in a second to accept the approval of the resolution 2021-01 hiring policy. All in favor? Motion passes. Council consideration to install Oprow Diesel fuel tank at the wastewater treatment plant. I know I've talked to Josh. He called Coleman Oil and said that Coleman Oil does not put tanks in. I've reached out to Prime Land or CHS, Prime Land to see about getting a tank. He suggested a slip tank. I personally don't know if the slip tank is the best idea because they're gonna be lifting it with the tobacco, setting it on the trailer, taking it to Kendrick, getting it to Bull, swinging it around, sending it down. So I would like to get some more information from CHS Prime Land or how we can go about putting a tank in. Uh, Mike?
Um, I got something to add for you.
Okay.
Uh, at work, when we put that tank in, we had to buy it privately and then, and plum it in ourselves and then Coleman Oil comes and fills it up for us.
So is it the acre rate or the whole?
It's not their tank.
Right.
But you have to also have it in a 110% containment area.
Where did you find the rules for that?
The ten, the containment?
Containment area, yeah.
That's in, it belongs to the EPA.
It all depends on how many gallons.
Yeah.
How many is yours?
Ours down there is 530 gallons.
Okay, and is it a gravity feeder or is it like a mechanical?
I have, we have a pump hooked to it.
Okay.
A fuel, standard fuel pump inside the, inside the shop.
Oh, can you maybe pass along the information where you-
15 gallon manate pump.
Like where you got it from?
Oh, boy.
I think if you have a double wall-
That was a long time ago.
We don't have to do it tonight.
I, um, I'll, I'll, I'll ask in the morning to see if there's any record.
If you have a double wall tank, I don't think you have to have a containment.
Okay.
I do. Huh? You do.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
Does the containment size change?
No.
No.
So then what's the purpose of having a double wall tank? It's for transporting. I mean, the, the big tanks are double walled, I mean, like thousand gallon tanks. But even if they do, even the, I used for Coleman. Yeah. And all the tanks were all double walled and you had to have, if you had two tanks, you only had to have one containment. As much as one point two of what one tank is, not as big as both of them. But even, even when they do have a double wall tank, there has to be a containment.
Right.
Um, and how big did you say the containment area was?
110%. Uh, of the tank that you're holding.
Okay. So can you measure, so 110% of, say, 500, how much, how many gallons? I was thinking no more than 500. Actually, because we have an idea of fuel usage that we're actually going through between Gator, or not the Gator, the tractor, tobacco stuff that would take Oprow Diesel.
No, not, not that many gallons.
Like, any, say, six months?
If it's fifty gallons, I'd be surprised, for the tractor and the, and the backhoe.
For six months?
Yeah, and, we don't really...
Use a lot of off-road diesel?
No, I just use it, the backhoe mostly to do the beds, which is like, stop, start, dump, stop, start, dump, that's it, but it just doesn't use that much diesel.
In a, a winter when we're plowing?
In which, when we're plowing, then the dump truck used quite a bit of diesel, and the tractor, I would use, I probably went through three, three tanks last winter, four tanks.
Is there a way that Bonnie might be able to track the off-road diesel use that we did last year?
It's possible.
Just so you know, there is a diesel tank buried underneath the wastewater plant for the generator, and it had a hand pump on it at one time, so that you could get diesel out of it, but when the Prime Land guy came to fill it up, it only took sixty-five gallons, and it made him mad, because we're supposed to order a hundred. I said, I don't know what to tell you, I put the stick down there, said it was empty, so it must not be a very big tank, I don't know.
So is the generator something that we'll be moving forward with, with the new water, that it's gonna be requiring diesel as well?
Probably, yeah. So, I wonder if we can find, there might be a spec at the water wastewater plant, I don't know how big the tank is, I don't know, there might be.
Can you do some more research?
Yeah, I'll do a little research.
And talk, and see about where you think a, an idea for something like that might go, because I know that the fire department was a little interested in that.
You're, you're gonna need to go above ground, otherwise you got insurance issues to deal with.
Oh, okay.
You gotta have a million dollars worth of spill insurance.
Oh, okay. Well, and the reason we're doing this is to buy bulk diesel that we don't pay tax on, that will be insured to offset cost price increases.
Right, and...
That is why we're doing this.
And the fact that they got rid of the off-road diesel app.
That store, that's where we were using it.
Yeah.
At Far Hall.
Yeah, so talk to Josh, and just kind of get an, get an idea, then, uh, am I allowed to make a motion, Wendy?
Uh huh.
I move we table the consideration of the install of off-road diesel fuel tank until the July meeting, to, um, get some more information on that, and then, Mike, if you could get that and reach out to me, that'd be great.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have four rigs that take diesel, and we're gonna, that's kinda, we're gonna take it in short, son.
There is a tank sitting right up here that's unused now, I believe. And it's sitting in a trough.
Oh, this is...
That stove oil.
Yeah, but the stove is gone.
Oh, okay, yeah.
They gave it to Deary, and we traded him for a standard.
Oh, all right, all right, all right. So that's not, that's out of service.
He didn't tank, I'll donate a tank.
Okay, okay.
I'm a double wall tank, I got a single wall tank, I got three of them.
So we have a motion and a second?
Or five hundred.
All in favor?
I'll second it.
Uh, Wendy? Motion passes. Justin requesting permission to purchase utility control application, which can be used at the water treatment plant, as well as wastewater plant after upgrades are completed.
So, when Phil, our electrician, came down and put the new programmer-controlled computer into the water plant, he showed me an application, he went all through the water plant and discovered that it was cellular, so our signals are transmitted through cell signals from the upper to the lower, down to the water plant. And so, um, there's an app, it costs six hundred dollars per year, it can go right on your cellphone, mine, yours, Josh, whoever, and you can actually run the water plant from your cellphone, you can check the reservoir levels, you can activate, deactivate pumps and controls. And, this app, he said, once, uh, he, he can install it down there, we already have the cellular network, um, he said that we could use it at the wastewater plant as well, when they get their SCADA system, the new SCADA system goes in down there. So we could control and monitor both locations from our cellphones. Now, this doesn't free us entirely from having to go down there, there's still things that we have to fill chemicals, uh, change chlorine canisters, all of that stuff still needs to be done, but it would eliminate most of our daily driving down there, looking at the monitor and writing it down. It would all be electronic, and it saves all the data for five years, so, all of the data that the water plant generates would then go into the computer, and our engineers or the city, or whoever, could run all of graphs and statistics, and do everything off that data, because it's stored in the computer. Right now, everything we do is on paper, I didn't bring an example, but we write down, we look at the monitor, we write the number down, we go to the pressure valve, we look at it, we write it down, and we keep track of everything that way.
So less than a year.
So, that would just be out the window completely.
And how much did you say it was?
It's six hundred dollars a year for the app, which he said was less than a phone line or an internet connection, which is true, um, but it would save us mileage and gas hugely, huge. Especially Josh, because he has to drive a lot farther than me to get down there from his house on weekends, so, I will be willing, I would be willing to talk to Phil about it more, and get a total, total cost, I didn't have a chance to get the absolute total, but I'm sure just the app and his hourly rate to, you know, hook it up, or whatever. But I will be, I'd be willing to do that if it's something we're interested in, and, you know, not just Josh or I could have access, it could be whoever, Dick, or you, or, I mean, whatever, anybody could look at it, Nikki can look at it, she can look at it from home, and... The cocks are breaking, yeah, you're not allowed to touch anybody's stuff. But, um, it's, it's not just us that would be, Troy has already set up that way, and so he was able to show me Troy's reservoirs and everything, and even he might be able to be, you know, if he needs to repair something from, you know, work on, or whenever, he could take a look at stuff and say, oh geez, there's a leak, or, you know, something, but, anyway, so I just wanted to bring that up.
I think it's a good idea, I'd like a little more...
Well, it's probably one of those applications that certain people have, certain restrictions, and certain people have permission to things.
But maybe he can come by and do a demo with city council at the next meeting, so he can show you his phone, and show you what it can do, and, you know, it, it would be, I think it would be worth, I think it would save a lot of money, I know it's six hundred dollars a year, but I might pledge to save fifty dollars a month somehow, I might make you that deal, if I can somehow save us fifty dollars a month somewhere else, then... Does that sound okay?
We'll shake our hands.
What's that?
I'll just take it for your pay.
Does somebody want to make a motion to...
I'll make a motion to table, um...
July meeting?
The utility control application until next month, until July.
Is it the twelfth? Oh, the last is on, the calendar's too far away.
It's like the twelfth.
Okay. All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Passes. Did you get a chance to look at the vehicle checklist?
Yes, I read through it, uh, earlier, and it looks good, um, I'm looking at the...
Did you get a chance to look at it? And, and my thing with, my thoughts on it, we would get, you could have some copies in the, in the vehicles, and then, you know, sometimes you don't make it back to City Hall, but they would need to be turned in and filed every week. So you fill this out daily, and then they would have to be turned in end of every week, yeah. And I know that you don't always get gallons, so you can just put zero, but, we're, you know, as we can track the mileage, the gallons, and just, if there's any comments or, you know, stuff, just to make sure that we're monitoring the vehicles better, to get as long life as we can out of them, is my, my thoughts.
Well, I thought this looked okay.
Uh, if you want to pass along to Josh.
Yeah.
Uh, Wendy, any thoughts?
Well, it's good.
As long as, as long as they're, they're using it.
Yeah, it looks fine to me, it doesn't, it's not, it's only one page.
Do we want to pass it?
The only thing that I've seen, if you're gonna do this weekly, maybe change the format to more of an Excel sheet, where they have all five, six days, you don't want to do that.
No, it's daily, they just turn it in every week. See, the reason, because...
That's what I'm saying, is make it...
Right, but what I'm saying is, if, they, they can turn it in every day, but if they don't come back to City Hall that day, then they can turn it in the next day, just as long as they're turned in by Friday of that week. See, we, I, go ahead, Mark.
Well, so are you suggesting that one paper per week rather than paper per day?
One paper per week, rather than paper per day.
So, I looked at doing that, but then I, it was hard to get the, enough room for comments, so they have to like, so the comments would be added, a quart of oil, or added, you know, whatever the, the thing was, that's why I was trying to keep it like that, but I'm willing to, to revamp that, if we need, if we filled it out, it would be better, I just...
No, that makes sense, I get, I get your saying.
Even if you did that, we could still approve this, and then you could always change the format, it's still the same information.
Right, just let Josh look at it, too, and see if he's okay with it, too, so we can table it until next month. Okay, make a motion to table the vehicle inspection checklist down tomorrow?
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to table the vehicle inspection until next month, all in favor? Motion passes. Uh, staff reports, Justin?
I was on call this weekend, and I started having trouble making water Sunday, so we're transferring water from the upper reservoir to the lower reservoir at the moment, uh, because it started sucking in mud, and, you know, it's just too dirty right at the moment, but we expect that it will clear up here in the next couple of days, and we'll refill the reservoirs, so that's what's going on, um. And then I have my utility thing, and, oh, when the primary controller got reinstalled, all of the functions of the water plant came back, so there was little things that were not working, that had just kind of slowly, like, stopped working over time, and now it's running exactly like the day that was put in, all the times, uh, that it runs, its backwash cycle, all of that is all exactly like when it was built, so it's working, and so, uh, Josh and I are thrilled about it, so, and I know it was expensive, but, um, the electrician said that that just, they weren't designed to last even as long as it did, and that lightning storms, uh, power loss, all that stuff, it just kind of degrades it over time, so. And, we're trying to catch bon boing, and...
Good luck with that.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's about it.
Nikki?
Um, I don't know, I stopped Calum moaning.
She was worried about it.
I was worried about it, he was mowing kind of backwards, so I had to drive up and turn around and go back and make sure that he hadn't gone all the way back. Yeah, he's okay, no, not that bad.
Paulie wanted me to ask if there's any way that we can stop some of the flow of the water coming down to her mother's house. When it rains as heavy as it has, and then it's starting to wash away some of the edges of the roads.
You can see the grass. Well, um, Roger Kector and Monty Loan have definite opinions about this, and I may actually talk to them, because Monty used to run a grader along the sides of the roads, and slope them differently, so there might be a way, I fixed this alley right here today.
I saw that.
I did go up to Monty's and fix his driveway, I fixed Neil's drains three times, and it keeps washing out, um, so, but I think overall drainage period needs to be something that we look at as a project, like, there could be a few more coal hooks added here and there, some that probably need to be cleaned out again, just some general stuff in general, yeah.
That's all I have.
Mark?
Uh, that's a motion, so...
I have a question, Wendy, in light of the events tonight, is it, is that what you're, uh...
Yeah.
About going into an executive session?
I was going to motion an emergency executive session, Idaho title seventy-four-two-oh-four-fourC. And, may I read it?
Yeah.
An agenda may be amended after the start of a meeting upon a motion that states the reason for the amendment, and states the good faith reason the agenda item was not included in the original agenda posting, final action may not be taken on an agenda item added after the start of a meeting unless an emergency is declared necessitating action at that meeting, the declaration justification shall be reflected in the minutes.
It's necessary to know, we can know, but what's the reason?
We may have walked out on the job.
Do we need to discuss what our, I have no idea about moving forward, or, like, I think we should discuss some things.
Yeah. I, I mean, I don't think that you can take any steps...
Right, no, I don't want to, yeah, no, I don't want to take any steps.
Go in that direction. I'll need to just leave the meeting.
Well, you said quit it.
Well, I think it needs a, it needs a formal...
Needs to be...
Yes.
Formal resignation.
Needs formal.
Well, then I, do you want to do staff report still, or?
Yeah, go ahead, Wendy. Well, I mean, I guess I don't know, there was a motion on the table, didn't anybody second it? And is it...
I don't know what we're going for.
Well, I didn't know, I was just wondering if we needed to for what happened, or if we want to just...
I think we just wait until, well...
Wait and see what happens? Okay. So, Wendy's staff reports?
Yeah, I just had a design update from Stillman, he said, um, they're working on plant, preparing a preliminary design information still, gathering cost estimates from vendors, creating a preliminary engineering report that will go to DQ and USDA, gathering more details on what equipment we will, we'll be getting, and what the plant will look like and cost, he, um, thinks that will be done in about a month, or a month and a half. And then we got an email, um, from Stillman that came from Karen Kelly at Army Corps of Engineers, so, she said, instead of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming from them for our project, we will receive one point two-five million, um, which they're hoping will help us keep our rates down.
So, one point two-five million instead of what?
Seven fifty K.
Well, that's a considerable help.
Yeah.
Anything else, Wendy? Mike?
Yeah.
Clifford? Anybody else?
Um, can I follow up with Judy? Uh, did you say there was water going into the manor?
On the manor property, I did not know that we have a manhole on the property, and we have it, like, totally buried and covered.
Oh, okay.
So, a former city employee here said, hey, you might want to tell Greg to move that, I just wanted to know, who do I need to speak with to see if that is a manhole that's still being accessed, or if it's like, just a dead hole?
Well, it will be being accessed, especially if we start the sewer collection project, they will all be dug out.
I personally can't find it.
Okay.
So I just signaled, if somebody could come over there, I could point to it.
Yeah, I'll check the map.
I appreciate it.
If the lid will have to come off.
Okay, great.
And we'll have to slow test it and everything, so...
Thank you.
Um, thank you for letting me know, and if you, anybody sees any water running down a manhole, let me know, I hope, because it goes straight to the sewer plant, so... Oh, and some cows broke a fence at the manor, between headlars and the manor.
Oh my, okay.
They jumped right through that.
Okay, that would be behind us.
There's a chain link fence that goes between the manor and headlars, and right in the backyard, they got, they jumped right through it, and it came off, it came apart, and it, it's kind of the BlackBerries there.
Is that the six that they were missing?
They came from behind the manor, they were loose.
Yeah, I see them in the parking lot by the dumpster, they're kind of cute, yeah.
So just after my, I, I know Greg Xander is the one to contact.
Yeah, I've had his number now, I've got his number, thank you.
If you got them, Carol, I'll come get them.
Yeah.
I'll take them to the sale.
So, tomorrow, is it just business as usual, where they continue working, although the position has not been approved by the council? I mean, I, I think the public deserves to know why we are doing nothing while the mayor walks out, because we asked him about something he did that was not lawful.
I agree. I agree.
Did someone make the motion, because I already did.
You can't make any sort of emotion on that.
I can, Idaho title seventy-four-two-oh-four-fourC.
Then you'll have to go into your executive session.
That's what I just said, that's what that is.
I'll second that, I think we're gonna talk about that.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to go into exec, Idaho exec, executive session, Idaho, I don't have the phone in front of me.
Idaho title seventy-four-two-oh-four.
What's the subtitle, was it B-A, or B?
B.
B. Is that a roll call vote?
Mm-hmm.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
Uh, sorry, Vicki?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Yes.
Look, no, look, pass it.